Good evening. I call on November 2nd, 2022 Apple Valley Planning Commission meeting to order. The first item of business is the approval of the agenda. Any changes from staff?
Yes, we have a couple of changes, Madam Chair, or just one change, excuse me. The item 6A, the Rivers of Life Sketch Plan, has been pulled from the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners?
Move of approval?
Second. Moved by Commissioner Schindler and seconded by Commissioner Sandell. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. The next item of business is the approval of the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered routine and will be enacted with a single motion without discussion unless a commissioner or citizen request to have any items separately considered. It will then be moved to the land use action items for consideration.
Move of approval?
Second. That was approved by Commissioner Schindler and seconded by Commissioner Sandell. Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. 3B is the approval of 2023 Planning Commission regular meeting schedule. I did want to just make one note on there that on the December, right underneath Wednesday, 9 o'clock a.m., it shows December 7th, 2022, and then December 21st, 2023. Questioning if that is incorrect.
Where was that again?
That is on the first column, underneath Wednesday, 9 o'clock a.m., you see December 7th, 2022, and then right underneath it is December 21st, 2023. I'm thinking that should be 2022.
All right. We will make that change.
Thank you. What's the pleasure of the commission?
Move of approval?
Second. Motion approved by our first was by doctor, how about that? Commissioner Schindler, seconded by Commissioner Sandell. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. The next item of business is 4A, public hearings. This is for Orchard Place 4th Edition. We will now open the public hearing for Agenda Item 4A. The affidavit of publication for the notice of public hearing is available for inspection in the planning department. Everyone wishing to speak at this public hearing should be sure to fill out the attendance roster or virtually register with the meeting organizer. Include names and addresses so the accurate records can be maintained.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. We are working through some items related to that, that public hearing. Therefore, we are requesting that the, you have opened the public hearing. We are requesting that a motion be made to continue the public hearing, take no testimony from the public, and then also we're asking that we be directed, another motion would be to direct staff to prepare the mixed-use business campus zoning ordinance.
Can I have a motion for to continue the public hearing till December 7th? And for the prepare a draft for mixed-use business campus?
So moved.
Second. That was moved by Commissioner Schindler and seconded by Commissioner Sandell. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Okay, so that brings us to five land use action items. And that is Apple Valley Square 7th Edition, and that is Alex Sharp.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As stated, this is a, this is for Apple Valley Square 7th Edition Site Plan Building Permit Review and preliminary plat variances and a conditional use permit. The actions requested this evening, there are four. Previously, previously, the Planning Commission reviewed five actions, though upon further review, staff is suggesting that the, one of the actions be combined. The reason for this is that with Class II restaurants being a conditional use within the zone, when the city has traditionally approved other Class II restaurants within 1,000 feet, they combine the two actions to a single resolution and a single recommendation by the Planning Commission. Previously, that variance from the 1,000-foot separation to a institutional residential use was a separate action before you, and I've removed that and put it so that it was consistent with past practice. The site, just to give you a brief recap, as I will go through things relatively quickly, is at the northwest corner of 153rd and Cedar Avenue. The proposed subdivision is shown there in red. Again, a subdivision, preliminary plat subdivision was approved by the city in 2018 and expired after one year. We are back with the second review on this item currently. The site is zoned retail business, which provides that a Class II restaurant is a conditional use. It also sets the parking requirements and the 1,000-foot separation distance to residential. The preliminary plat has seen some updates since your prior review. Additional easements were shown over the stormwater, but other than that, no other changes were made. The big item of note for change on this application is not 100% finalized yet. We have this drawing and an illustrative drawing to follow. The city engineer working with the applicant is looking to make some changes to the entrance of the site on the south side from 153rd that will essentially push traffic to the east once they enter the site. What this will do is create a pedestrian island and slow down traffic and prevent backups as vehicles come into the site waiting for pedestrians to cross onto 153rd. The best example of this that we have to be able to show you kind of how this works and what we're seeking to do is from Maple Grove. They have a similar site access with pedestrian crossing immediately upon entering a site off of a city street and have created this to push users into the site and prevent backups onto the public roadway. Working with the applicant, this is something that they are more than willing to explore and do, but final design is still ongoing with the city engineer. A condition has been added, and you can see it in your report, that final design is to be approved by the city engineer. The site plan has not actually seen any changes from the prior iteration. There were not required changes to traffic flow as part of this. A couple of discussion points occurred, but ultimately, the site plan did not require amendment. The overall landscaping plan will be adjusted slightly. As I noted, we're still working through some final design, but you can see that there were two trees that were proposed on that southern island that will now no longer be there, or it may only be one tree, or there may not be enough room. It'll be highly dependent on how the pedestrian island and pedestrian safety works with that island. There will likely be some landscaping, it just may not be trees. The mix of tree species had no comments from our natural resources staff and meets requirements. Landscape plan for Popeyes itself was amended to remove the trees along Cedar so that they didn't compete with the existing trees along Cedar. Species were also adapted to meet with current code. Final review is subject prior to City Council by the Natural Resources Coordinator. A condition has been added for that, and you will notice on several of the conditions that were added date to be determined so that we can insert the most up-to-date plans as the condition. This was the species mix that I'd referred to. We do, we do still want final design or species selection to be reviewed by Natural Resources. The separation distance that I noted is required for Class II restaurants for institutional and single fam, or and residential uses. In this case, you saw this diagram at the last Planning Commission meeting. We are moving forward with that variance, and one of the, or the code requires a number of provisions. This is extremely text-heavy, and so I've got kind of an abridged version, but your report does include all this text so that the public and Planning Commission can have the ability to review the findings before this meeting. Essentially, there are findings of conformance the city needs to find in order to grant a variance, and staff has developed a draft of these findings for Planning Commission's review. The first one is that special conditions need to apply. What staff has put for this is that other similar uses exist closer than the 1,000 feet, in some cases significantly closer, and that the intent of the separation distance by code is being met as the other uses are much closer and this one is further away. It's also along a major transportation corridor. The second item is that the granting, granting the variance won't be contrary. That again goes to the intent being met. The special conditions do not result from actions created by the applicant. Staff did work with the city attorney to develop this one as it is a little bit tricky, but we are able to note that being in a dense downtown zone does, is not necessarily the applicant's fault with a mix of uses, and existing uses are again still closer than this proposed use. The granting the variance is not a convenience. In order for this to, use to occur, a granting of variance would be required, and the granting of variance is the minimum necessary in order to achieve, and the site applicant, or the applicant has pushed the use as far on their property as possible from the residential. The second variance before you this evening is a parking variance. At the last meeting, I noted that it was a 75 stall. I'd come up with 10 extra stalls. It is a 65-stall variance, so that's correct in the actions and the PowerPoint this time. Thank you for noting that. We'll go through some of those same pieces that you saw on the separation variance, but again, I'm going to move relatively quickly. If you do have questions about these, we can go to any of the text, or if you have suggestions to include in some of that text for the final resolution before going to City Council, please let me know. The special conditions on this site, we noted that this used to be an interior mall with extremely deep bays. These bays are not typical to a storefront like this. It was because there was interior, interior hallway space and multiple stores being accessed from that interior space. So there's a lot of wasted space in the interior of these sites. In fact, a large portion of the Burlington Coat Factory is unused storage. The granting of the variance is not contrary to the intent. It would be consistent with the intent of the chapter, and additionally, the comprehensive plan does recommend redevelopment, which is what this site is looking to do, and densification of our downtown. The use of, the variance is not caused by the applicant. Again, this wasn't an interior mall. They're doing an adaptive reuse, which again is supported by the comprehensive plan. It's not a convenience for the applicant. Again, in order for this use to occur, the variance would need to be granted. The, additionally, the parking demand far exceed, or parking available far exceeds the current demand, as was noted by Planning Commission prior meeting. And the parking variance is the minimum necessary at 65 stalls. There were significant updates to the facade of the building. The EFS material has been reduced to being no more than 30% material on any one side. Brick has now been brought up, or a faux brick has now been brought up to around 8 to 10 feet around all sides of the building. On the last meeting, one of the key aspects was that there was going to be some screening around the utilities. That area on the left or bottom image shows a slated fence of some kind around an electric utility, and then on the prior image, there was a small fenced-in area around the gas utility. So the applicant has sought to comply with that provision as well and be consistent with Chase Bank to the north. With that, there are four actions before you this evening, and I would open it up for questions.
Commissioner Schindler?
Madam Chair, Alex, do you, can, do you have anything from a farther-out view of how that new intersection or that new entrance into the area? Just kind of curious how it would work.
The best that I will have is this preliminary drawing by the applicant where we didn't have the amendment to the island yet. Essentially, what that would do is, if it's consistent with the Maple Grove, is adjust the island inward and prevent left turns as you enter into the site so that people do not go around the island and simply get in front of the building in the same manner as what they had before.
And then it would circulate them to the east?
To the east through the site for parking. They'd go down to, let's go to an aerial here. They would be able to go down to the drive aisle that you can see west of the Arby's and utilize that drive aisle to get to anything in the Burlington Coat Factory area, and then either go east or west, depending on where they're seeking to get within the site, to either head out to the Popeyes by going east and then north, or they could potentially also go west and then head east down into the drive aisles as well.
Would there be any, I mean, is it just kind of go where you want, or is it, would it be an intentional adjusted path?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Schindler, the path would be set through some directional signage that staff has suggested. Additionally, the new islands will help to channel traffic through. You won't get as much cut through with islands in between and then the use of those parking spaces. So on the southern side, you'll get a lot less cut through. Once you get around the Arby's site, you may see a little bit more cut through, but the design, it would be less efficient when you look at the entrance to the Popeyes to try to cut through some of that. However, that is something that I believe we can try to look at between now and City Council with the applicant to see how we could try to channel that and take a closer look.
Because I mean, obviously, people's instinct is to try to get fastest way to the location. So I'm just, was curious of how, if it would end up confusing people, or if it could actually be a benefit to the site. I mean, initially, it seems like a benefit because it should reduce the stacking as people come in, waiting for people to cross. They can take that.
I, Chair Kurtz, Commissioner Schindler, on a planning perspective, it creates a pedestrian refuge. The cross of traffic becomes one lane shorter in front of the Aldi site, which is the busiest area. So that's certainly a positive position. But other than that, I would defer to the city engineer if you've got any comments, if I've missed something.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, the intent, when we looked at mitigation for the traffic, it's the Aldi corner. So let's say hypothetically, in the future, we have to mitigate a right turn lane addition, or let's say traffic was so difficult and accident rates were high enough that we wanted to restrict that access at 153rd in this site. It would likely be a median that there's always vehicles coming in, and then instead of making a left, they could go out to the right. That doesn't eliminate the conflict that's occurring, which is the Aldi's front door interior to the site. So no matter what changes are made to the roadway, there's still a conflict causing backups. The recommendation that I had here was, we looked at the trips and distribution, and there are a lot of vehicles coming in at different access points throughout the site, primarily Cedar southbound into the right end. Leaving the site does not change. So you can still drive from the interior of the site south and access 153rd. Where we're running into the issues are turning into the site from 153rd and the high number of pedestrians walking across the parking lot to enter the Aldi store. This was a means to simply get cars in and direct them away from that conflict point. Internal circulation from there, the addition of the islands do help kind of funnel cars so they're not cutting through. The main, the primary focus was pedestrian safety and eliminating the backup onto 153rd. And this was the only way to achieve that without changing the building or changing Aldi's front door. The rest of the site still operates the same, if that's.
So there will be still the ability to exit?
The exit's the same, does not change.
So they'll, the people that are going to be exiting will still be going across the Aldi area.
Yep, but, but it doesn't.
Stack as much as.
They can stack all they want and all the way back to the interior of the site. We're trying to prevent, where the accident rates are occurring is the right turns in because people can't, they're stopped because of pedestrians. So by directing the traffic, as soon as you come in immediately, just free right, yes, it's not a perfect solution, and you might have a car backing out of a parking stall that may hinder that motion, but it's at a much less frequency than the number of pedestrians crossing immediately in front of Aldi. Should this solution not work, Plan B? We remove the delineators and striping at some point in the future. There's not, it's, it's a, it's a low-risk solution to mitigate some traffic here.
I appreciate the explanation. Makes sense.
Well, I'm still struggling with this. I have a hard time with the, the traffic coming in and out. You know, I take a look at Popeyes versus Chase Bank. You know, there's not as many people, customers going to Chase Bank as there will be to Popeyes. I'm just really nervous about the traffic and pedestrians and, and stuff like that. So if the solution is the right turn and going straight across on the east side, they're still coming out. Even if you're coming out, you still have pedestrians walking across. And if we don't even take that business into consideration, but all the other businesses with pedestrians, I'm just really uncomfortable. No way possible that we can do an entrance from Cedar Avenue. That was discussed last time, correct? There's no way.
Access spacing's meant, it's restricted from a safety standpoint, no. There is enough distribution in the site. There's, in a shopping center, there's always going to be pedestrian parking conflicts because the point of it, the way shopping centers are designed, you're parking, you have a drive lane in front and vehicles. Unless we change shopping center, how they work, you're going to have that conflict. But the, the solution here was really just, the conflict that we're seeing is at the Aldi center. And the only way to solve this, like I said, even if we mitigate it and redid 153rd, this is still going to, going to occur unless you move Aldi's front entrance further to the north, and I don't think that's feasible at this stage. So this, this was a low-risk mitigation. The traffic counts, the traffic distribution for Popeyes is, yes, there's an increase in traffic here, but it wasn't substantial like you would think. There is a lot of trips, when we talk about passerby trips. You're not adding tons of new cars to the system. A lot of the users that are already using the new site are already in the system. So that, that, that isn't as bad as what you think from, from a number standpoint.
Can someone give me, give me an example of where there is a shopping strip mall with a fast food right in it like this? Other than, I mean, I know Canes and everything else, but there's no shopping strip mall there.
You could look at Chick-fil-A in front of Cub, which was added.
That's still kind of, yeah.
You could look at all of the outbuildings in front of Walmart as well. They weren't added. They were done as part of the original Walmart design.
Right.
Added in later, the best example would be likely this, all of the restaurants in front of Cub. Canes likely being the most intensive.
You're just.
Not Canes, I'm sorry, Chick-fil-A.
But you're not crossing over that parking lot, you know what I mean? It's, it's just a little different on this one. Explain to me Plan B, what you said about Plan B. If this is, doesn't work, what was your Plan B again?
Well, you're not building a lot of infrastructure. You're putting striping and pavement delineators to, to direct the traffic from the pedestrians. If it doesn't work, you can simply remove the striping and delineators. You're not building curbs and islands and turn lanes to mitigate. That's why I said it's a low risk, but, but ineffective. Now, Alex, can you show the slide at the, at the Maple Grove Center?
Yes.
The rate, where I came up with this is this center had the same issue that the corner building had the same backups occurring with people trying to make a right turn into the center, and then there were pedestrians immediately when you make the right turn, so there's barely enough room for two cars to stack when you turn in. And with the high frequency of pedestrians coming from the parking lot to the, to the retail front door, you're stopped all the time. So this solution was, and this center did the same thing, where instead of allowing vehicles to continue in front of the entire shopping center, direct them into the parking lot and let it distribute from there. Most likely, what'll happen is to the users on Popeyes and Chase are, even, even the traffic report shows a higher amount of distributions coming from Cedar Avenue south onto the site, which doesn't cross it. There's still some traffic that's going to try to enter the site here, but a majority of it is still off of Cedar.
So let me ask you this. So would the pedestrian coming out of the Aldi go further to the north when the right turn takes? So if the right turn goes like, like that, is the pedestrian this way? So it's before, is it before or after?
No, it's after.
When they take the right?
It's after.
So it would be here. So they would take a right without worrying about the pedestrians?
Yes.
So the only thing we have to worry about is when they're coming out?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Thank you, Brandon.
It minimizes conflict points. It doesn't eliminate them. It minimizes them.
Anyone else? Questions? Concerns? Okay. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move we recommend approval of a subdivision of preliminary plat of Lot 2, Block 1, Apple Valley Square 4th Edition into two lots by Apple Valley Square 7th Edition, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff report.
Second.
That was moved by Commissioner Deekman and seconded by Commissioner Schindler. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Madam Chair, I move we recommend approval of a variance for the required number of parking stalls from 405 stalls to 340 stalls, a 65 parking stall variance from Lot 1, Block 1, Apple Valley Square 7th Edition, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff report.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Deekman, seconded by Commissioner Schindler. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Madam Chair, I move we recommend approval of a conditional use permit for a Class II restaurant with drive-through and a variance to reduce the required separation distance from a Class II restaurant from a residential use from 1,000 feet to 506 feet on Lot 2, Block 1, Apple Valley Square 7th Edition, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff report.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Deekman, seconded by Commissioner Schindler. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Madam Chair, I move we recommend approval of a site plan and building permit authorization for a 2,347 square foot Popeyes restaurant on Lot 2, Block 1, Apple Valley Square 7th Edition, subject to conditions as outlined in the staff report.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner.
One brief change I neglected to mention. We've got a, a square footage discrepancy on some of the plans. The correct square footage is 2,519. Not that that is pertinent 100% to the motion, but just do want to note it.
Friendly amendment accepted.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Deekman, seconded by Commissioner Schindler. All those, or any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye. Motion carries. Okay. Thank you, Alex. Now we go to 5B, Schuler Shoes. And that is also Alex.
Okay, my wrong slides up. There's one action requested for this item this evening. It is a site plan and building permit authorization for a 7,200, 920 square foot retail store for Schuler Shoes, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff report. We have not, you'll recall that this site is so new that we do not have even fully developed aerials or zoning map for it yet. So this slide is meeting multiple different intent. My goal will be to have some of that set up prior to city council action as we amend things as these projects come forward with Lund's Byerly, Schuler Shoes, and the potential third user. The site is located at the southwest corner of Pilot Knob Road and 155th along English The site is, was already platted, final platted, which is why that action will not need to occur as part of this application. However, park dedication and other fees may have been deferred as part of that plat. So one thing that you will see noted in the staff report is that park dedication is due. The overall site plan for this development didn't call out where the building would eventually be. However, I wanted to note this because it does note the sidewalk plan, which does require a little bit of further refinement from the Schuler Shoes plan. That is where staff is working with the applicant to determine the best route for pedestrian crossings so that the site is entirely connected. The other piece that I wanted to note with this overall site plan with the Lund's Byerly's is that it shows that there are shared accesses on both the north and south with not only the Lund's Byerly's lot, but the third lot that is further to the east. So it's a shared private access drive, not streets. They are all addressed off of English Avenue. This is the site plan for the Schuler Shoes site with the 7,920 square foot retail building. As the site is zoned for retail business, a retail building is a permitted use within the zone. Therefore, the only action this evening is the site plan, building permit authorization. As you can see, there are a couple discrepancies between this and the overall site plan. For instance, the northeast corner has the sidewalk without connecting it over to the east. Staff has suggested that north of the building include the sidewalk all the way across from English Avenue rather than the south side as that meets the overall intent of the original site plan with Lund's Byerly's. These are relatively minor issues that can be corrected prior to city council action. And staff has put, placed conditions, draft conditions in the staff report to address them. I just skipped on it. The grading plan, this, as common with Fisher Marketplace items, the grading plan is relatively flat as they bring the site up to the grades, finished grades that they will need to be prior to the sale of the land. So there's not a lot to review on this item. Utilities are predominantly from English Avenue. You've got all of the building utilities to the west and then stormwater is handled over the overall Lund's and Byerly's plan development and a regional ponding system. The landscape plan, you'll notice staff put several conditions into the draft report on that. We would like to have a little refinement of it. I believe that it's slightly below the 2.5% code requirements. And so the areas that I've got highlighted in the red are areas that we've worked with the applicant to state that they will be starting to fill in with some of their landscaping. A 7,920 square foot building will likely require quite a few more trees. Additionally, we've got some areas where sidewalk will be located that will take out some of the shrubs that are proposed. So the landscape plan is still being refined. If you have any comments to it, the applicant has stated that they're very open to suggestions. For instance, when I made the suggestion for the southern area, that's a very large swath of grant, of land that doesn't have anything in it currently. And so that would be an excellent location for some of the additional landscaping required on site. The interior of the building shows that it's a single tenant plan for the buildings. Well, staff is excited for Schuler Shoes to come here. We have encouraged the applicant to look at possibility of future use down the road. The other piece, actually, that I should go back and note because I noted it in the site plan, or in the staff report, is that staff has worked with the applicant to put in conduit for a couple of electric vehicle cars that will likely happen at some point in the future. The actual installation of the, installation of the chargers would not happen at the time of the store as demand is not quite there yet, but they are much easier to add once the conduit is in place and set up for them. So they will be towards the front entrance. The interior, they've chosen some of the energy efficient items and energy efficient HVAC. These are suggestions by code to try to increase the environmental sustainability of the building. Additionally, I chose to put in some of the elevation of the trash enclosure as it meets the, or is made of the same materials, which is a faux brick material as the building. The elevations are relatively simple in that they contain enough variation in materials, coloration, et cetera, to meet city ordinance. They are not including a EFS-type material. It is all a faux brick panelized system, which is common for new construction these days and should meet all intent from code. There is one rendering that I chose to include as well. Staff does have others available if the commission is, or is seeking some additional information on that, I can switch over to them. Other than that, I would open it up for questions and we have a single action this evening.
Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Deekman?
Alex, can we talk about the sidewalks for just a little bit?
Yes.
Plus, I feel like Mr. Scanlon would like this if I asked this question, so I'm going to ask it for him as well. So we have a sidewalk along the eastern side of the lot. How do we get from there? Is there any dedicated area to cross the parking lot?
Chair Kurtz, Commissioner Deekman, yes. If you look what will be planned, and I don't know whether this will be able to show for the members of the public, and it's not showing up well on the screen. Let's see if the mouse will allow me. If you look at the northeast corner of the site, where the sidewalk kind of goes to nowhere, what was originally planned for this site was for this sidewalk here to come across and connect with the sidewalk here and then connect across here. So that's the suggestion I was directly referring to with the applicant. They are amenable to it. It was just between architectural and civil plans, didn't get the full transfer over. That also affects the landscape plan because there's a dense planting bed there, so that will likely move down to this area here because there wasn't planned for pedestrian connection here. This then goes down to a sidewalk at Mr. Carwash, so there is connectivity there. And then this would go over to additional sidewalk on the overall site plan that I'll scroll back to. So here's where we are, where it would cut across here, and then it will go up to Lund's and Byerly's.
Okay. Thank you for that. I have one additional question, and that is, is the, you know, the infiltration, is that handled as an entire site or I don't see any on this particular outlot?
Chair Kurtz, Commissioner Deekman, infiltration in all stormwater are handled, were handled as all part of the Lund's and Byerly's.
Okay.
So that all of those requirements were met during the plating of this property.
Perfect, thank you.
Nice-looking building.
It is.
Mm-hmm. Anybody make a motion of recommending?
Madam Chair, I move we recommend approval of a site plan and building permit authorization of a 9,000, or 7,920 square foot retail building for Schuler Shoes, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff report.
Second.
That was moved by Commissioner Deekman and seconded by Commissioner Shinler. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Alex. Okay, we go on to six other business. We have pulled from the agenda the Rivers of Life sketch plan. So that brings us to B, review of upcoming schedules, and Mr. LaBlase?
Yeah, just a reminder that this is the only meeting in the month of November. There will not be a second meeting as we normally do over the months. The next planning commission meeting will be held December 7, and it will be here at 7 o'clock.
Motion?
Move that we adjourn?
Motion made by Commissioner Shinler and seconded by Commissioner Sandahl. Any discussion? If not, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Meeting is adjourned.